Today is August 5th, 2025. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room, Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, could you please take the roll call?
Commissioners Braun, yes, Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. At this time, we will have Josh Axbig from the AARP to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh. And at this time, in conjunction with the AARP, we would, the city of Mandan is proclaiming August 14th, 2025, as, which celebrates the 90th anniversary of the Social Security Administration. So again, we are proclaiming August 14th, 2025, the 90th anniversary of Social Security. And at this time, Jerick from our engineering department will give us a construction update. Jerick?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have a word document pulled up on the screen. I don't know if it'll show up here. I guess I'll just, just narrate this here. There we go. Pull that up for everybody. All right, Memorial Highway, we've been tracking about seven projects. Memorial Highway, folks, folks may have noticed, the North Side Temporary Road has been complete and traffic has been moved over completely to the temporary road. That is to allow for removals on the South Side. I should reiterate that it is a temporary road. We've been hearing a lot of comments about that lately, asking questions about why it's, why it's wavy, why it's, why it looks the way it looks. And that is to go up and down to meet access to businesses at a grade that's acceptable for access into businesses. So that's why it's a little bit wavy, but it is a temporary solution and the final road will be concrete. The Storm Sewer is complete from the bay to the highway near North Sky Pond. And the work on 21st is complete and restoration can start to, start to occur there. Storm Sewer will begin on, on the east end of Memorial Highway and start working west. Installation of water services have began on the south side of the highway. And the Kist Sanitary Lift Station is about two-thirds complete. We are just waiting for pumps and a control panel and at that time, the lift station will be complete. For our water treatment plant, Phase 3 optimization project. I am, let me move my notes over here. Sorry about that. Swanburg began form work on the new CO2 tank slab and is completing concrete removal around the groundwater lift station for electrical work for the Collins Avenue Reservoir. Structural fill, pipe encasements, and leveling course for the new found, new tank foundation is complete. The new tank foundation slab placement is scheduled for 4:30 AM on August 7th. So that's just in a couple of days here. For the 2025 reconstruction project around Monte Drive and the Lewis, Lewis and Clark Elementary area, water main installation continues on Monte Drive. Concrete repairs and roadway reconstruction in the area around the elementary school are being prioritized to ensure that all construction activity is complete before school starts. The contractor is still on track to complete installation of all water mains in 2025. For the 2024 reconstruction project, there's only one block of water mains, water main remains to be replaced. Concrete repairs around Christ the King School are being prioritized so that work around the school is complete before school, school starts. The contractor on this, on the 2024 project, the contractor does plan to request a time extension for the chip seal work to occur in 2026 instead of 2025. And that would just be to mitigate the risk of the chip seal occurring too late in the year where it cools down and doesn't, isn't as effective. And the last project that I have here for an update is the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon Project. The only remaining location is the Custer location. Concrete forms were placed today and we are using high early strength concrete. So we should be, we should expect First Street to be open again this week. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them. Otherwise, that's what I have for an update.
Any questions for Jerick?
Jerick, I'd just like to remind the people that the construction folks on the majority of these projects, projects have lost three weeks and a day to the weather.
Yes, it's been exceptionally wet.
It's been exceptionally wet.
Yep.
It's had an effect on the timing of the project.
Absolutely, yeah. Everybody's, everybody's doing their best to work around these, the unexpected weather. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Jerick. Appreciate it. Further announcement, Chief Ziegler will talk about Grill with a Cop. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners? Yeah, it's that time of the year again. We do our grill, our annual Grill with a Cop. Usually it's the Thursday before school starts. So August 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Eagles Park, come down, get free, free hot dogs, bratwurst, hamburgers, get to meet the police department staff. We're bringing a lot of our equipment down, our side by side. I know last year, we had a K-9 demo. I'm hoping that Medvee and K-9 Officer Black will be doing another demo. Drones, our drone will be out there. Highway Patrol is joining us this year. They're going to bring a couple of cars down and stuff, so it's growing. And come down, meet the officers and eat some good food and have a good time and socialize.
Again, Chief, where is that at?
It's going to be at Eagles Park, August 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And if all the previous years we've done this, as an indicator, people will start showing up around 4:30.
Okay. Look forward to it. Thank you. Now, at this time, something new for the commission. We're instituting the public comment section. So is there anyone here who would like to address the commission regarding issues outside of the public hearings tonight? Again, is there anyone here that would like to address the commission? Third call for anyone that would like to address the commission. Hearing none, we will move on. And I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Roar to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Consider approval of the following Board of City Commission meeting minutes, July 15th, 2025, regular meeting.
I move to approve the July 15th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. July 29th, 2025, special meeting minutes.
Make a motion to...
I move to approve the July 29th, 2025 special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, the second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Heinzchen. Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing. Consider a 10-year extension of the Mandan Renaissance Zone Program. Madison?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I have a short, brief presentation to do before anybody had any public comments. All right. If you could show on screen, I'm so sorry. All right. I'm just making it more difficult. All right. Okay, so the Mandan Renaissance Zone Program was established in Mandan in 2005. It's a tool to help cities revitalize their communities, more so aimed in the downtown areas. And that's by offering both state and local tax incentives for five years. Both residents and business owners are provided with an incentive to invest in the community. So far, Mandan has completed 92 projects and over $30 million in private investment has been added. And on average, the cost of the property tax incentive for Renaissance Zone projects is recouped within two years and three months after the property reenters the tax roll. And on the screen, you can see this is our Renaissance Zone boundary. The Mandan Renaissance Zone consists of 37 physical blocks along Main Street in the downtown area, including both commercial and residential properties. Six, six of those are half blocks because of federally exempted government-owned buildings. So that reduces us to 34 blocks. And the state criteria for determining how many blocks a community can have, it starts off by population of 5,000, which 34 blocks. And then after, you can have one additional block per 5,000 people added to your community. So Mandan can now have up to 39 blocks. And then in 2020, this two-block non-contiguous area was added to the zone. Some of the properties are Farland Properties, Faulkner Seed, Metal Craft Products Welding, Marshall Lumber, Manufacture Home Court, and Excel Homes. In that time, the Renaissance Zone Committee did feel this was an area for a potential redevelopment and the Renaissance Zone could be a tool to help them. Just a little side note, if there is no activity or any desire by the majority of the property owners, for quite some time, we can move the island per approval from Commerce and the Renaissance Zone Committee. So the types of completed projects from 2005 to present, we've had 33 rehabilitation projects, 38 lease projects, 10 new construction projects, four residential projects, seven purchased with improvement projects, and three lease hold improvement projects. The most popular one by far is the commercial rehab projects. And to be able to qualify, to get the full incentive, that five-year property tax incentive, the applicant needs to reinvest at least 50% into the building's value of beginning value, beginning assessed value of the building. And 80% has to be minimum capital improvements. So example would be a building's true value assessment would be $450,000. The applicant would need to put into, with improvements, $225,000. Property owner would still pay land value and special assessments. The Renaissance Zone Program has encouraged private investment in the zone between 2005 and 2025. A total of 97 projects that have, has been completed. Adding $30 million in documented private investment in the downtown and Main Street area. And here is a little example of our most recent completed Renaissance Zone project. And you all probably have seen this on 1121 East Main Street. This was a rehab and lease project. And it is Dakota Customs as of now. So the beginning assessed value of this building was $295,000. And as it's completed, the actual private investment was to, over $2 million was put into this building. So large investment. It retained a business. So it was a really good project. So completed Renaissance Zone projects between 2005 and present have resulted in 12 retained, 25 expanded, and 21 new businesses in our community. Other community benefits is generate sales tax revenue, have new retained jobs, and additional needed products and services in our community. And a little data and analytics. This graph shows the yearly begin, beginning assessed value versus the new assessed value from 2005 to present. You can see in the orange bar graph is the new assessed value and the blue one is the beginning assessed value. So you can see that jump in those values. The value of getting assessments on projects from 2005 to present totaled $9.9 million. And the value of new assessments on complete projects from 2005 to 2024 increased to a total of $28.6 million. So the average new assessed property value increased by approximately 109% from 2005 to 2024. And again, on average, the cost of property tax incentive for Renaissance Zone is recouped within two years and three months after the property reenters the tax rolls. So during the North Coast 68th Legislative Assembly, some adjustments were made in the Renaissance Zone incentives, including Renaissance Zone extensions can be granted up to 10 years instead of the, used to be the cap at five. That is the recommendation that the Mandan Renaissance Zone Committee would like to update in our development plan. There was other changes, but with no recommendations from Renaissance Zone Committee. And that would have been to receive up to eight taxable years of Renaissance Zone benefits instead of the five. But we didn't feel that was necessary at this time. Future recommendations may include to opt to have two islands. And we talked about it, the old high school site was a top contender to become an island. That still hasn't been made official and it can still be talked about after the extension to be made. So the next steps, so our current plan will expire by the end of this month. The Renaissance Zone Committee is seeking that 10-year program extension. Requirements before expiration from the state law is to provide a public hearing, which is tonight, and approval of a resolution from the city commission. And also get letters of support from other public entities, the school board, which went about last night to the school board for their approval. And it was an anonymous yes. Next week is Park District I will go before, and then by the end of the month, will be County Commission. If you have any questions, please let me know. Public can get more information at the stevemandan.com/renaissance.
Any questions for Madison? Okay. Thank you, Madison. And at this time, we will open the public hearing. And if there's anyone here who would want to comment on the Renaissance Zone, first call for public comment. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Look for a motion, Commissioners?
I move to approve the application to renew the Mandan Renaissance Zone Program with an update of the development plan and also to approve the resolution for the extension of the Renaissance Zone in the city of Mandan with the tax exemptions and credits as provided for in Renaissance Zone Act.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Commissioners, if you could move down to new business, item number one, which is consider the Renaissance Zone Committee's recommendation of a 10-year extension of Mandan's Renaissance Zone Program. Madison, do you have anything more to add?
And I have nothing to add. I can ask Attorney Oster if, since they're all the same motions under all three of them, that was acceptable just to do the first motion and no other changes?
Yes, yeah, since they're all the same motion, we don't need any further motions.
Okay, so we'll move to ordinances?
Don't, that was included as well in looking at the motions, so all three items have been covered. It was the same motion for each of the items.
Okay. So with that, we are...
Mayor and Commissioners, Madison? Consider the Renaissance Zone Committee's recommendation for a 10-year extension. So, so how does that affect? How does that affect the five-year 100%? I mean, is that now spread out to 10 years and there's, there's new?
Mayor and Commissioner Braun, this would just, the tenure is just specifically talking about the program itself, not the incentive for the applicant. So we're just, if, if I don't get an extension on the program, the Renaissance Zone is gone. The whole program, the five years will stay in place for the incentive for all applicants. So it's two different things. But yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda? Are there any items, Commissioners, you want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no old business. We took care of new business on the Renaissance Zone, so we will move to item number two. Under new business, consider the Morton Mandan Public Library 2026 budget. Barb?
Good evening, Mayor and fellow Commissioners. I just kind of want you to recognize that MMPL is not just a library. We have become a hub for learning, connections, and community well-being. So the, I'm going to also kind of do the 2024 annual report. But all of that is embedded within the 2026 proposed budget. So in 2024, we just want, I want you to recognize that we increased our visitors by 5,300 people coming in our doors, so we had over 40,000 people coming in. Passport services increased 21% from 24 to, or, yeah, from 2023 to 2024. And our bookmobile services also has increased. So we saw a total of 17, or no, sorry. We, shoot, that's in my way. So we had 33 monthly stops with the bookmobile. We had 7,194 people coming on board. And we did 237 doorstep deliveries. That means anybody who, maybe if it is their homebound or if they've just, they don't like winter, they don't like driving, they can contact the library. We will hand-deliver book bags of books or materials for them to read. Also, in 2024, I'm sure you've met some of our dynamic people that we have in the library. And we had over 253 programs that were presented. And we had 9,470 people attending. That's a mix of kids' programs, teens, adults, and family. We also have 39,950 e-material checkouts, so that's ebooks, e-audiobooks, and even e-magazines. We had computer usage, 2,696 minutes. I believe that is what it goes by. And we had 822 new borrowers coming into the library. Also in 2024 was kind of our big year of starting some of our strategic plan, agenda ideas. And so one of our focuses was on communication. We wanted to look at ways that we can market new materials, services, and activities, expand marketing avenues, incorporate open and close signs from several locations, and then add Morton Mandan Public Library identifier on the park side, which that part we have not done, except we have our two digital signs. We have really looked at ways that we can highlight displays in our, I call them trophy cases still. We had different pop-up websites through like our summer reading program last year on space and then also with the holidays. We also tried to do as many visits to Studio 71 as we possibly could. Another area that we were looking at was our collections. In 2023, we kind of halted a little bit of what we were ordering because nobody really, there's nothing written down in our collections as far as who is ordering what, how much we have of certain items, and we just needed to get a better handle on it. So we went with a program called Collection HQ. And they give us updates all of the time about how different areas of our collection is looking. So for instance, we have one that is just called Dead on Arrival. So these are new books that have been into, entered into our library within a year's time. For instance, we had 55% of them were, went out on at least more than one circulation. We had 25% of them that never went, never left the shelves. And so our goal is to dig into those kinds of things and find out why are those materials not leaving? Is it stuff that is not interesting to our patrons? Is, whatever it might be. And so then it will help us do a better job of purchasing materials. That also tells us books that are grubby. And so we literally go through and on our grubby list, we can pull out the books that are dirty, the pages are torn, anything we might have missed. And those are items that have probably been checked out at least 50 times or more. So that has been a really, really good thing. It's caused us to focus in. And we've created now different collection categories or departments. So somebody, a group of people is ordering just adult materials. Others is ordering for juniors and the bookmobile and YA. And the others focused on easy picture books. We also decided to make ease of our, for our patrons that we moved our movies. It used to be on the way west end of the library. We've now moved it up on the backside of the circ area. Huge hit. They're going like game, or Gamebusters. We created some genre spotlights for just adults because they like some genre identification, so we did that. And then, of course, we have some pretty creative bookmobile people who decided they needed to spooktacular the highlight shelves on the bookmobile. Building and grounds. We have been adopting kind of a plan, planter concept. So we're asking community members to come in and help us decorate these planters all seasons. We used to just do it in this, for the summer with the flowers, but now we're starting to do it in the fall and the winter as well. That too has been a big hit. We've done some landscaping, as you can tell outside. That was huge. And then we've also drawn some interest into our, our entrance to the library. People couldn't find where the front door is, which is amazing to me, but now they can. We also added an igloo on the loft. You'll have to come and check that out. Next, one of our other goals was community. And so we want to just kind of make sure that MMP, MMPL's interactions are visible and tangible. We wrote a grant and we were able to get furniture for outside on our patio. We see that busy all of the time. And it can be yes for the concerts, but it is during lunch hour, all of that kind of thing. Our grant was called Fresh Faces, New Spaces. So we wanted the outside to match what the inside of the library looks like. We also added, changed a little bit in the teen zone, and we have now seen more... and we have now seen more teens coming in, especially playing on our gaming table. So if anybody's interested in that, check it out. Services, we have expanded. So Bookmobile has done a couple of really cool things. They have always read to Head Start out in New Salem, but now they have started adding some story and craft kits for teachers in Glen Allen. So it was K1 and 2 teachers. They would find, create some themes. They would ask the teachers if they wanted them. They would supply them with books, materials, everything they needed to teach that theme. Huge hit. I think they're going to now move it into Hebron. Staffing, one of the goals was that we have people attending more, attending different conferences, and so I was able to go to the ALA conference in San Diego, and it was a really good educational moment, so very beneficial. We've also had people attending our regional and technology conferences that are happening, as well as state. The next thing, we also wanted to make sure that we're having regular professional development, so these are just two examples of what we've done. We typically have four a year. And now, moving on to 2026. We have four goals that we are using for 2026. Number one is that we just want to make sure that we're doing good for the residents. We want to promote community well-being through learning, opportunities, and connection, and we want to continue to be that home away from home for all people. Goal two is we want to do smart budgeting. That's using county and city funding wisely. We're going to be cutting costs where we possibly can, and we're going to invest in what matters most. And that, of course, is not just up to us, it's up to our board, it is up to our patrons. Our next goal, number three, is to do some self-generated growth. About a month ago, I asked anybody who was interested in looking at ways that we can increase revenue without relying just on the city and the county, but also making sure that we were not taxing ourselves. We came up with some really good ideas, so we're going to be continuing to pursue them, explore other funding sources, pursue diverse revenue streams, and identify paid services that are valuable to patrons. I'll be sharing some of those ideas in a little bit. Our next one is call to action. We want to create a smart, future-focused budget. So again, we're looking at, as we're developing this, we're really looking at what we can do with our strategic plan all the way up to 2029. Making sure that we're reflecting on what we need now, but also preparing for tomorrow, and then also making sure we're fitting our mission of building an inclusive community. So our sources of revenue, roughly the city of Mandan contributes about 72.5%. So I guess we are asking that, in total, that they contribute, the city contributes $760,221. About $23,200 is going to come from the North Dakota State Library, a state grant. We are catching up. Morton County, for some reason, has been behind a little bit, so we're finally getting there. They're going to be contributing about $270,912, plus the state grant of $14,438. So our total governmental funding would be $1,045, or $45,571. So when it coming into our revenue, these are the areas that we really need to focus on. In all of these components, we have seen our services, just in the first seven months of 2025, increase. So we were going by that, and we are projecting our revenue changes would be like this. We are going to be starting to charge for large quantity printing. It amazes me how many times we've had people coming in and wanting 50 copies, 70 copies, 250 copies. We're kind of like the UPS store in Mandan, I guess. So we're going to be charging 25 cents. Normally, we charge 20 cents a page. We're also going to be doing our printed photos for passports, but also for carrying and anything else that they might need. A passport-sized photo is going to go from $15 to $18. That has never changed since we've started doing passports. We're also going to offer a new digital photo services. So if you are renewing your passport, you can come to us, just get a picture, we'll digitally send it to you, and that's $10. We're looking at doing some mailing services. For instance, if, we have a lot of people asking us about this, so we can provide an envelope and a stamp and charge them $1.25, a vanilla envelope. So these are just little ways that we're thinking that can help patrons. We've had a lot of people lately even asking for file folders, you know, so why not? Our miscellaneous revenue sources, again, I know every year I've talked about our meeting room rentals, and I really did jump it up this time. It is truly a focus that we're going to be working on. We have increased our room rentals by adding a setup and reset fee. Our custodians are doing all of that, and so roughly depending upon the hours or the timeframe that they're renting the rooms, it would increase by either $50 to 75 for businesses and individuals and for nonprofits. And other government agencies, not the city and the county, it would be 20 to $40. We are also offering technology assistance, so if they need help with that or want to borrow a lot of our equipment, that would be $30. Some ideas that we have to make sure we are increasing this is to kind of create some loft experiences during the holidays and during the summer music concerts. It is, again, a spectacular, spectacular view up there, and we need to really focus on that. We're looking at sponsorships for specific programs or for library initiatives, and we're even looking into the Amazon wishlist for helping with our program supplies and materials. All in all, when you add these three revenue sources, it brings us to $1,207,120,000. Our expenses. Again, we're going to really try to trim where we can and invest where it matters. So staff is huge. We plan on only, if we have somebody retire, that's the only way that we're going to, at this point in time, look at hiring anybody new. We might move somebody from a 29 hours to a 30 to 35 hours. That would be the only increase as far as staffing. The other key theme was that extra pay period. Really struggled with that, not going to Next, with our professional services, we are, we just increased by 3.1%, so that would be auditing, that would be accounting. Also CDLN, we've had a couple of libraries leave the Central Dakota Library Network, so that would be encompassing Bismarck through New Salem, through Hebron, all of those area libraries. And so we've had New Salem leave, and Light of Christ Schools has also left. But we've added a new one in Halliday. We increased technology support a little bit as well. For insurance, we saw a 7.2 increase for building insurance and an increase of, for gas, electricity, and phones of 6.28%. Library materials, you'll actually see that we are decreasing. The only area that we are probably adding is in the electronic resource area, and that is just because we're really trying to boost up our resources that people can have, such as News Bank. They can access the Bismarck Tribune online, see pictures, the full thing, and they can do that throughout the whole county for free. So we are looking at decreasing our spending overall by about $13,000, partly because there are a lot of grants that we can write for kid books, for adult books, so we're, we feel very comfortable with that. Our Collection HQ also makes sure that we're ordering good stuff that our patrons need and want. Programs, you'll also see that we have decreased that by about 45% from before. Our friends of the library have decided that they would be willing to totally fund teen and adult programs for 2026. Again, we have, it's pretty easy for us to look for grants and donations and stuff for children and for those summer reading programs. Supplies and materials, the only thing that we kind of increased was our passport services. We bumped that up to 3,000. As you can see, we're already at 1,700, sorry. So we felt it was more, it was better to do that. We also decreased a little bit with office supplies. Overall, our budget stayed the same. Our decreases for our repairs and maintenance went down about $2,500. You will notice a little bit later on, oops, I'm sorry, we had a decrease in building repairs and maintenance about 24%. So we feel like everything is running smoothly, and we shouldn't have to worry too much about any major things. Last but not least, we will continue to move over our budget into a capital outlay. So this year, we had a little bit more for office equipment, so we're going to focus on public services computers. Hopefully, then next year, we will not have to do that. We will be onboard, but yet we still have some set aside in case we need to. With our bookmobile, we'll still transfer that money over. And for our building fund, again, we don't see any need for huge things, repair bills. This $94,000 was with the upper roof that we had done last year. And that, oops, is what I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Barb?
Mayor and Barb, just on your total count of people at the door, I think you put it as, are you including all the, all the events you do in the park and stuff and capturing the counts of those people?
As much as we possibly can, yep. We literally, if they come through the hallway there, we count them as ours. So, yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Barb? Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the Morton Mandan Public Library 2026 budget as recommended by the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
We have motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Board of Trustees, and you've done a nice job over there.
We work really hard, and we really like what we're doing, so it makes a difference. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item under new business, consider the Mandan Airport Authority 2026 budget. Lindsay?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Here while I pull this up. I'm asking this evening for your consideration in approving the airport's 2026 budget. I have a short presentation for you. Just like to give you a few statistics on the airport every year. Right now, we have 100-based aircraft, five airport-owned T-hangers that are at capacity with a waiting list of about 13 people, one airport-owned community hangar that's nearly full, but I do like to keep a few spots open for transient aircraft, 16 privately-owned hangars that bring us land lease income, a full-time aviation maintenance facility, egg sprayer operation onsite. They spray approximately 80,000 acres per season, an aviation medical examiner onsite, several flight instructors onsite, North Dakota Civil Air Patrol Headquarters at Mandan Airport with a fleet of three Cessnas, and one federal agency aircraft onsite at the airport, certified flight simulator, and an aerial surveyor onsite as well. There's an average of 60 operations per day, approximately 200 additional operations in the month of July just from Oshkosh traffic. And I did have a short video here of our fly-in, just some highlights from our fly-in, but the video didn't really jive when I sent it over to the city, so I'm sorry about that. But there, this year, we had 1,750 people approximately attend our annual Planes and Pancakes event, and if you were out there, it was a really windy, it was a really windy year, so it wasn't quite as good as 2024. We had a little over 2,000 in 2024, but it was extremely windy this year, but they did still come for breakfast, and it was still a successful event. The services we offer, snacks, drinks, and ice cream for pilots, a full kitchen, a picnic area, hangar and tie-downs, Jet A and Hunter low lead. There's two pilot lounges, a flight planning room, a sleep room, men's and women's showers, and two courtesy cars to get to Our revenue, we have, we sell fuel at the airport, so jet fuel and avgas. After the cost of that, in 2024, we brought in $92,575 in fuel sales. Our five T-hangers in Unit 40, our community hangar, brought in 230, a little over 232,000. And this is, that's also in 2024. And land leases for the 16 private and commercial businesses out at the airport brought in The developments that we did this year, we had quite a bit of movement this year, and finally, some old projects that we've been talking about in here to you folks for several years, and it's good to say we had, we had quite a bit of movement on those. As you know, we bought a new airport terminal in 2024, or, I'm sorry, April of 2025, and our old terminal is there on the left, our new terminal on the right. And so this year, we did quite a bit of improvements to the new building, added the ADA ramp on the front, finished out the men's and women's showers that were roughed in but never finished in the building, and did some improvements to the kitchen, and added the sleeping room, things like that. This is a, this is a pilot's view when you first walk into the airport terminal. It's absolutely beautiful. The kitchen area for the pilots, we call it the clear prop malt shop. They come in and they can have ice cream with their families. They can make malts and shakes and just enjoy the atmosphere there. We have a vintage pinball machine for them to play, and they can purchase snacks from the airport and just hang out and relax while they're there flight planning or spending the night. I don't, if you saw our old boardroom in our old terminal, it's seated about half the capacity as, as we do now. So we have a really nice and high-tech boardroom that we can have our board meetings in now. Another project that we're starting on the 18th of this month is the Runway 1-3 and 3-1 concrete maintenance project. There's quite about a spa repair that needs to happen out there, some old repairs that are now failing, and joint crack sealing and things like that are going to be removed and replaced. As you can see in these pictures, here's some of the damages that will be repaired by, it'll be August 18th through September 12th that the main runway will be closed. Our grass strip will be open almost the majority of the time, so we can still have people landing. And included in that project, we'll get all new lines painted on the runway, which these are 12-year-old lines, so we'll have nice, fresh, new paint on the runway. Included in this project is the asphalt Included in this project is the asphalt crack sealing. So from Highway six all the way to the concrete threshold of the runway and everything in between that's asphalt will be crack sealed. And again, that project starts August eighteenth through September twelfth. So the wetland modification project has, has been on, on the radar since 2019. We started trying to come up with a solution for this a really long time ago and it's been a struggle and a battle. And it's good to say we've finally got some traction and some movement on this. But this is a, a view of our wetland. The FAA determined, I believe in 2019, that it was a wildlife attractant, a wildlife hazard. We have quite a bit of ducks, geese, pheasants and even cranes that decide to make the Mandan Airport their home and birds and airplanes just don't mix. So we needed to mitigate that wetland. Another aerial view of that and this is right along Highway six there. This is kind of facing north, northwest. So you can see it's right next to the highway. Here is a view of the plans. This would be north to the top there. So you can see our five T hangars there on the, the bottom of the page. Right to the north of it, that delineated area is our, our wetland area. In the pink inside it, that represents all the drainage tile that was installed. And a little bit to the north of that drainage tile is the lift station that was installed. Not only does this mitigate the wetland that we have, but it gives us more developable space out at the airport. So we, we do have those thirteen people on a waiting list. We would like to build another T hangar when the funds are available to do that. Cost of steel is pretty high still right now, so. But we, we do have it on the airport layout plan. Anything you see in pink on this picture is what we'd like the airport to look like. The hash-marked buildings are the ones that are already there. So as you can see, once the wetland is gone, we do have room to build three more T hangars. So as of, I took these pictures two weeks ago. So as of now, we do have all the controls and the electronics installed for the lift station. As you can see kind of in the background there, it was pumping water that day. It was really pumping, it was after we got that three inches. So it was really pumping water that day. Now the water isn't being held onto the airport. It is pumped into the DOT right-of-way, goes under a culvert in the highway out to the west of Highway six and then follows its natural flow through USDA property. There's a, a photo of the lift station that was installed. And again, in the back, you can see it's, it's pumping and doing its job. So any questions about 2025 and what we've done so far? Twenty-twenty-six projects coming up and what we'd like to do next year. The apron access road and parking lots, mill and overlay design. This is just the design, this is not the project itself. As you can see, the asphalt all the way from the Highway six up until the concrete runway, they've, it's seen better days. And we'd like to do a mill and overlay on, on that asphalt and just get it looking better so that it lasts, so that it lasts another thirty years. We'd like to construct a new airport sign. It, after working the budget, I really feel like we, we do have money in the budget this year to give ourselves a sign that we can be proud of. The sign that we have right now is great, but it's really not representative of the airport that I think that we have. We, you know, we have the biggest general aviation airport between Minneapolis and Seattle. And I really think that a great sign out at the road would, would really do some good for the airport. This isn't the, the sign itself. This is kind of just a mock-up of, of an example that I put together. In 2026, I'd also like to purchase at least a hundred horsepower snow removal tractor and grass mowing tractor. The Case CX-60 that I currently use is almost twenty years old. It has been experiencing more and more maintenance issues. And in the last two years, I've had to put approximately four thousand dollars into it in repairs. And it currently has no air conditioning and I pulled it out of the shop yesterday and it started spraying antifreeze out of it. So now there's, there's something else going wrong with it. So it, the tractor has definitely, definitely seen its, its years. Another project that's been on the CIP for several years and we just haven't had the funds to do it, but I believe we do in 26, is the T hangar two through five maintenance. I did not include T hangar one on this because T hangar one was built in 2019 and it's in very good shape. It doesn't, it doesn't, it really doesn't have any damage to it at all. I'd like to have a company come in and do an inspection of the limiters, examine the motors, the belts, the pulley keys, the hinges and the cables. There's presence of crinkled tin and I'd really like them to identify the damaged and sunken or raised aprons as well and we can, we can fix those up. The big project that, that the board and myself really would love to pull the trigger on is we're proposing a twelve-thousand gallon hundred low lead self-serve upgrade and a new twelve-thousand gallon Jet A self-serve. Currently, we have a two-thousand gallon hundred low lead self-serve that I move fuel from the fuel farm out at the highway in eight-hundred-and-fifty gallon trips. So aircraft fueling would be on the airside and fuel delivery from the trucks would be on the roadside. This would eliminate semis coming out onto the active and rolling their heavy equipment over our asphalt on the active side as well. This would also eliminate the time it takes for me to transfer fuel from the fuel farm to this tank. Potentially, it could eliminate three fuel trucks. If I'm not moving fuel from the fuel farm, we really don't have the need for fuel trucks and the maintenance that is required that goes into them. It would also eliminate the need for me to be called out for Jet A fills. If a helicopter or a turbine engine or a jet comes to the airport right now and I'm at home, I'm going out to the airport to fuel them because I'm the only one onsite that can do that. And it would also potentially eliminate the need for the fuel farm out at the road, which some might feel is eyesore. So it would really be, you know, a standalone system. Funding for this fuel system is fully dependent on North Dakota Aeronautics Commission participation. They've expressed interest in this and they have extra prairie dog funding that they're motivated to distribute because airports like Grand Forks International Airport and the Bismarck Airport received a large federal grant this year. So it did free up a lot of the prairie dog funding that North Dakota Aeronautics has to distribute to the littler guys like us. So they're, they're very motivated in helping us with this project. Typically, it would be a fifty-fifty split with this state agency. And determinations for this would be made in early 26. Additionally, I've given the airport narrative to, to Commissioner Schoburg. I think he had distributed those to the mayor and commissioners. And this is a great breakdown of what we as an airport contribute to the economy, both locally and statewide. It was put together by myself for the 2025 Economic Impact of Aviation for the North Dakota Aeronautics Commission. And I hope you have, you all have a chance to read that. And finally and quickly, I'd like to read some of the notes and reviews that we got just in July from some of our patrons that, that stopped out at the airport. Some of them leave me handwritten notes and some of them left me some Google reviews. And Lindsay, thank you so much for the hospitality and for running such a great FBO. It was great to meet you and we're grateful to use the sleep room, lounge and crew car. Have a great day. For your car facility and outstanding municipal airport. Thank you for a wonderful stay. The FBO, the car, the sleep room, the shower, priceless. I'll be back for sure. Mike Z. Lindsay, once again, thank you again for the overnight loan of your courtesy car on July ninth. We just returned to Oregon yesterday after our cross-country trip from the west coast to Illinois and back. Along the way, we were lucky enough to dodge quite a few thunderstorms. I also wanted to let you know that all of the FBOs we visited during our trip, Mandan stood out as by far the best. Your hospitality truly made a difference. Another, we just finished a cross-country round trip from the west coast to the Midwest in our Diamond DA forty. Mandan was easily the best FBO we visited along the way. The staff was welcoming, welcoming, amenities were top-notch and the self-serve fuel was both convenient and competitively priced. We've also never visited an FBO that provides ice cream in their snack room. I highly recommend a stop at, to any pilot passing through. Another, I fly here several times a year. Good self-serve fuel prices, nice air-conditioned pilot lounge, a great section of snacks, including ice cream, simple, clean, low cost, a GA dream, a courtesy car, too. The gas here was cheaper, has cheaper self-serve gas compared to Montana and Wisconsin stops. And finally, we were exhausted and Mandan was the oasis we needed. We were unable to fuel, we were able to fuel up and have a meal in their full kitchen, shower and have a little ice cream. The best of all, we got some much-needed and restful sleep. The staff there were incredibly friendly and helpful. One of my favorite FBOs we've stopped at during our trips between Washington and Florida in our Cessna one-seventy-two. It's incredibly nice and comfortable. So I really thank this commission for, you know, their support in helping us get into the new terminal last year. And I think it's really making a difference for the transient folks and for local pilots that are frequenting our airport. So if you have any questions for me?
Lindsay, how many gallons of Jet A and avgas do you sell?
One moment here. I believe I had that. I believe it's around ninety thousand gallons a year in avgas. Let's see. Around eighty thousand gallons a year in avgas and around thirteen thousand gallons a year in Jet A.
Just one other question, when these, the, the people, and it's great that they wrote you these notes. That's a huge compliment to you. So how does the, the airport, when you get a, a couple flying from, going back to Oregon from Illinois, how does the airport make money outside of the fuel sales?
Well, we can, we also do transient hangar on their aircraft, too. So if they'd like, if they don't want to leave their airplane out on the tie-downs, then we store their airplane in the hangar for them as well.
And if not, they?
If not, they tie down.
And is there a charge for that?
There's no tie-down fee. Typically, at general aviation airports, there is no tie-down fee.
Any other questions for Lindsay?
If I may, Mayor and fellow commissioners, I'd just like to make a comment. Lindsay does everything out there by herself, almost. That's a huge undertaking for one individual. I think Mark will appreciate that and agree. We are, are exploring an option to, to get a part-time person to take some of the load off of Lindsay so she can focus on more administrative functions. However, at this point, she does everything from weed-whacking to, to preparing budgets and construction improvement work, bidding, project specifications with the help of our engineer. But this, this young lady here needs a hearty pack on the, pat on the back for everything she does for the city. You know, the upper Midwest is sometimes deemed a flyover zone from east to west. But as you've heard already, no more because people want to come here to our airport and come to our community. And that's because of the lady standing before you. So Lindsay, thank you very much. And I think Mike will agree, you had the portfolio before I got it, that she works her tail feathers off, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
With that, I'd ask for your approval. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Questions?
I'm going back about a year ago when I just started here. There was a comment about different levels of aircraft. From what I remember, if we hit a certain level, we were a different tier of airport.
Yep. And so once, once we hit a hundred-based aircraft, that qualified us for an extra hundred thousand in federal funding under the bill funding. That's the bipartisan infrastructure law. That was a five-year grant and unfortunately, that is done. So we kind of, we, we teetered at ninety-nine aircraft that whole time. And now that we've hit our goal, that, that particular grant is come to an end. So unfortunately, we miss that opportunity by one airplane.
The only other question I had then was, how do, how do you market to people that are traveling so they know you have these amenities? And you know the, these great amenities? Like how do, how do you get the word to pilots?
So as a pilot, we use several different online. There's ForeFlight and Global Air and AirNav. And every pilot has kind of their favorite. There's Garmin. And so what I do is I, I have a checklist of all these websites that I go on and update our information on them. And a lot of these websites pull the information about our amenities and what we offer right off of the FAA website. And I have to report that to the FAA once a year and update that with them. So some of these sites, I don't even have to do anything because they pull it directly from FAA information that I update once a year. And some of them, I do have to go on and update things on them every once in a while. But I, I actually have a flowchart of, of these websites that anytime anything changes, I will go on there and update them. But every pilot has their preference of, of what navigation site they like to use when they're flight planning. I, I like AirNav. I know Mark likes ForeFlight. So, but I do go on those sites and update the amenities and what we offer on each one of those sites. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that, that both the Chair of our Airport Authority, Mark, and Lindsay are currently pilots. So they walk the walk and they talk the talk, both. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I move to approve the Mandan Airport Authority 2026 budget as recommended by the Airport Authority Board.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Bronn.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. But Lindsay, thank you for your presentation and thank you to the Mandan Airport Authority for all your work you do.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Let's move on to item number four hundred, new business, consider change order one for the Collins Avenue Reservoir Project. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. For you today, we have change order one on our Collins Avenue Reservoir Project. This change order is related to unexpected conditions encountered by the contractor on the site during the removals. At the, at the reservoir location, the contractor encountered abandoned reinforced concrete foundations of old reservoirs that were unexpected. DN Tanks kept track of time and materials associated with the costs for the removal, disposal, demolition of that foundation. And the, we had our consultant kind of review those costs and the times associated with that unexpected work. And DN Tanks is requesting nine days of additional contract time and a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to account for that. On the six million dollar project, this accounts for about two-point-three percent of the overall project cost. On the six million dollar project, this accounts for about two-point-three percent of the overall project cost. Um, during our project estimate, um, we had accounted for ten percent of contingencies. So this with, is within the contingencies, um, that we planned for the project. And we do expect the State Water Commission to participate at the twenty-seven percent cost share reimbursement for this additional work. It's our recommendation to approve the change order as presented, but I can try to answer any questions. And Tyler Fode from AE2S is also here and he'd be able to answer questions as well.
Any questions for Jerick?
Jerick?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but, but when they're preparing for something like this, isn't there some kind of ground surface radar or, or previous plans that have been looked at to say, well, we've got these structures? Let's, let's look deeper into this.
So we, we did review the, um, old, uh, structures on site and it was, um, miscommunicated or the removals were misinterpreted. The intent or the impression was that all of the structure and substructure had been removed for those old, um, reservoirs. But the substructure just was just abandoned in place and buried. But, so, um, we don't do any ground penetrating radar surveys. Um, we usually just do surface level surveys along with, um, utility locates and stuff like that. And we did not encounter it during the preliminary design phase.
So, so is, is this, is this common? Because it was an oversight, now, now we have to cover down on this? I'm a little confused.
Mayor Commissioner, I, I would say, um, an oversight in the sense that the, the impression, we did check in on it and the impression that we got was that the substructures were removed and we didn't dive deeper than that.
It's a pretty hefty mistake for not diving deeper.
Yeah. Should be noted that the, you know, there might have been cost savings in identifying it earlier. But, um, time and materials still would have been, um, used had it been identified earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Jerick, when the, the tank that you discovered, the remnants of the tank, that, uh, what was the year? We probably took it out in nineteen fifty, but when was it built?
The rebar was discontinued in nineteen forties, so we don't know the exact construction date. But, uh, yeah, eighty, eighty-plus years old.
But this, um, so the one that we took out of commission that was built in the fifties, the dome one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this predates that?
Yes.
So nineteen twenty, nineteen ten, something like that?
I think that's a fair estimate.
Okay. Any other questions for Jerick?
Um, reference, uh, Commissioner Brown's commentary. Is this something that we could look, look at, uh, asking the engineering firms to do in the future? What do you, what'd you call that? Ground penetrating radar or something like that?
It's something, it's some, yeah, Mayor Commissioner, um, Schoberg, it's something that we could consider. Um, I think that this is, uh, a fairly unique site in that there have been so many, um, structures requiring foundations all at different times along the same, um, site. Um, so this might have been kind of a special, uh, circumstances. But absolutely, if we encounter something similar to this again, we, that is something we could look at doing.
I'm just wondering in case we find other, uh, burial grounds, if you will, of, of, uh, concrete and, and steel. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I move to approve change order number one as presented.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Rohr, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
No.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five, consider petition for storm sewer improvements and engineering service agreement for the shores at Lakewood Phase Two. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, um, these next three items are, uh, separate items on the agenda, but are all towards the same goal. Um, they are mostly revolving around two parallel projects. And that would be a storm sewer project in the shores at Lakewood Phase Two project area and a water and sanitary sewer project in the same area. Here, I will bring up a map so that everybody can orient themselves. Again. Um, shores at Lakewood Phase One was Dutton Circle, constructed just west of the new Lakewood Elementary School on the north side of McKenzie Drive. Um, Phase Two would include an extension to the south of McKenzie, uh, and tying into Oxbow Trail on the south end of the development. Item five, on, item K five on our agenda is related to the, um, developer petitioned for a storm sewer project to completed, to be completed for this development. And we have, um, the resolutions necessary for the creation of a storm sewer district and, um, a, and a, um, engineering service agreement related to support on that, on these districts. The total cost of the storm sewer, we are estimating to be about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And the, um, engineering service agreement, we're estimated to be about forty-five thousand dollars. And this would all be assessed back to the, um, shores at Lakewood Phase Two, Three, and Four Developments, prorated by how each phase benefits from the improvements. I can try to answer any more questions on this, but we're recommending approval of the resolutions in the packet, necessary to complete, to create the district, as well as the engineering service agreement with Mountain Plains to support the project.
So basically all, um, all costs pertaining to this, this, um, work, the developers has agreed to, um, shoulder that?
Um, Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, uh, yes, in the sense that they had petitioned for the creation of an assessment district. So the costs would be assessed back to the properties, um, included in that district.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. What are your wishes?
I move to approve the resolutions creating Storm Sewer Improvement District Thirty-three, determine, determining the sufficiency of the petition, approving the engineer's report and the feasibility report. I also moved to enter into an engineering service agreement with Mountain Plains LLC.
Second.
We have motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to item number six, under new business, consider approving plans and specifications for the three, three-way agreement of shores at Lakewood Phase Two.
Mayor and Commissioners, um, this would be a parallel effort to the Storm Sewer Improvement Project that would include the construction of water and sanitary sewer, um, infrastructure in the shores at Lakewood Phase Two area. Um, the plans and specifications have been, uh, reviewed by the city and we are recommending approval of the plans and specifications. This project would be paid for by the developer. And we would, uh, after bids are let, come back with a three-way agreement with the developer, setting the terms of that three-way agreement. So tonight, what we are asking for is just approval of the plans and specifications to be brought out to bid. And we're recommending approval of that, um, resolution.
Mayor Jerick, are these, uh, particular plans here, are these something that are twenty, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven? What's the timeframe for these things?
Um, we would bid, um, we would, I think that the intention of, uh, the intention is to get them bid out this year to evaluate whether they could be completed this season yet, the underground work, with the, uh, knowing that we could pivot and rebid, relet in the, in the spring for a twenty-twenty-six construction. But the intention is to try and get a bid right now, just to see what, uh, what the, um, condition of the market is, I guess.
That's a very large area. It's gonna have to be very incremental in how this is applied.
Absolutely, yes. It would likely, regardless, it would likely bleed into twenty-twenty-six anyways, yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions for Jerick? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution approving plans and specifications for the three-way agreement for shores at Lakewood Phase Two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number, item number seven, under new business, consider bid advertisement for Storm Sewer Improvements, SSI Thirty-three, and a three-way agreement related to shores at Lakewood Phase Two. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the third item related to these pair of projects. The, uh, proposal would be to, uh, combine the two projects into one bid package and advertise for bids, um, uh, with one, uh, one bid award for the parallel projects. We're recommending approval to direct advertisement for bids for the paired bid letting. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jerick?
Jerick, by doing so, we're eliminating some redundancy. Is that correct?
Um, Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, yes, I think the, the intention is to, um, the intention is to prevent the redisturbance of ground for, uh, storm sewer installation with street work. And also to, um, maybe have some cost savings related to awarding a, an underground contract directly to an underground contractor, rather than awarding an underground contract with a street contractor as a pass-through for that underground work. Um, I know in the previous phase, we, we did award storm improvements to Northern Improvement and they then subcontracted the underground work to us, to a, uh, to an underground contractor. And there's just some inefficiencies there that we're hoping that, uh, to, um, maybe cut out.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Jerick? Hearing none. What are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the resolution directing advertisement for bids for the Storm Sewer Improvement District Thirty-three and the three-way agreement.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Okay, Jerick, we will now move on to resolutions and ordinances. Item number one, second and final consideration of ordinance fourteen sixty-nine and ordinance to amend and reenact section twenty-two dash two dash two of the Mandan Code of Ordinances relating to the city's sales, use, and gross receipt tax under the Home Rule Charter of the City of Mandan. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As presented at the last city commission meeting, uh, the purpose of amending this ordinance is to, uh, add sworn police officer and career firefighter personnel positions, uh, created on or after January one of twenty-twenty-five. Since the last city commission meeting, uh, city staff has not received any, any comments of any objection, uh, to, uh, amending this ordinance. So it's before you, uh, for second consideration and approval.
Any questions for Greg? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance fourteen sixty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We will move on to item number three. Consider the introduction of the first consideration and call for public budget hearing of ordinance number fourteen seventy-three making the annual appropriations for the expenditures or expenses of the City of Mandan, North Dakota for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-six, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and making the annual tax levy for the year of twenty-twenty-five. Greg?
Just waiting for the presentation. Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, the city is required to prepare the annual budget in accordance with the North Dakota Century Code. Uh, the city's annual budget process is coordinated by the Finance Department under the direction of the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, Justin Scholz, the Assistant Finance Director for the city, will present this evening the city's preliminary twenty-twenty-six budget. Uh, Justin will begin the presentation by recapping the city's budget planning process this year. He will briefly summarize North Dakota House Bill eleven seventy-six, better known as the three-percent property tax cap. Justin will then present the major financial highlights of the city's preliminary twenty-twenty-six budget. And then after his presentation, I will come back up to the podium and identify the next steps remaining on the city's budget calendar. And then Justin and I will stand for any questions that the city commission may have. So I'll turn it over to Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Starting out, we'll, we'll cover the long-term plan process that the city has went through. From January to April of twenty-twenty-five, the city commission conducted several, several working sessions with department managers to review and discuss the city's long-term plans for twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty for personnel, machinery and equipment, public facilities, and infrastructure. Then in July of twenty-twenty-five, more engineering and advanced engineering and environmental services presented to capital improvement plans for infrastructure projects to the city commission. Then moving into the long-term financial planning. In May of twenty-twenty-five, Budget and Finance Committee reviewed, discussed, and presented funding recommendations to the city commission for the city's long-term plans that went through twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty. In July of twenty-twenty-five, Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services Nexus Group presented the utility rate analysis update to the city commission, which takes us to the twenty-twenty-six budgeting process. In May of twenty-twenty-five, department managers submitted operating budget worksheets to the finance department. And in June of twenty-twenty-five, the finance department reviewed and updated the revenue, expense, and fund balance projections for the twenty-twenty-five budget. In July of twenty-twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed and discussed recommendations for the preliminary twenty-twenty-six budget. Prior to getting into the twenty-twenty-six budget, this wanted to cover House Bill eleven seventy-six. House Bill eleven seventy-six limits a taxing district such as the City of Mandan to a maximum increase to the district's total property tax levy on existing property at three percent. The bill has several exemptions, with the most prevalent being an exemption for new growth. Training was recently held by representatives from the state of North Dakota, North Dakota Association of Counties, and North Dakota League of Cities to help each taxing district understand the bill and how to properly compute the maximum allowable limits. It's important to remember that the maximum cap is on the taxing district's total property tax levy and not on individual properties. So moving on to the twenty-twenty-six budget, starting with expenses. Total expenditure is a forty-one-point-three million. Eighteen-point-one million of that being salaries and benefits. Eleven-point-five million for operations and maintenance. for operations and maintenance, 9.6 million for debt services, and 2.1 million for capital outlay. There's roughly a $3 million increase from the 2025 budget, which breaks down for salaries and benefits of $1.4 million increase, operations and maintenance and a $611,000 increase, debt service $1.4 million increase, and capital outlay, a decrease of $497,000. Salaries and benefits, the $1.4 million increase from 2025 breaks down for seven full-time positions for a $578,000 increase. Normally, there's 26 pay periods in a calendar year. Roughly every 11 years, there's a 27th pay period, just the way the calendar falls. 2026 ends up being one of those years, so for a budgetary standpoint, it's a $417,000 increase because of that 27th pay period. A 3% annual salary adjustment of $283,000, and other items, smaller items being, you know, part-time, overtime, social security tax, account for $159,000 increase. The seven new full-time positions fall within the general fund. They consist of a real property appraiser, a computer information system specialist, domestic violence detective, which was a grant-funded position, that's being funded from the half-cent sales tax fund, if there is no new grant that becomes available, three firefighter EMT positions funded from that half-cent sales tax fund. The city has also submitted for a federal grant. We have not received notification of award, but if there were to be an award, that would just reduce the sales tax fund need for those positions by the amount of the award. And then a street equipment operator. Operations and maintenance, the $611,000 increase, $275,000 of that being professional fees and services, $98,000 decrease in supplies, repairs and maintenance is a $313,000 increase, and subsidies which are a revenue pass-through for the city, but has to be budgeted as an expenditure as well, is a $121,000 increase. Debt service, a $9.6 million total increase, 7.2 million of that being principal payments, 2.2 interest payments, and 259,000 is service charges and issuance costs. Capital outlay, general fund accounts for $700,000 of the $2.1 million total. Half-cent sales tax is $246,000. Fire Equipment Reserve Fund, $821,000. Water and Sewer Utility Fund, $290,000. Breaking that down a little further, the general fund primarily comes from information technology department equipment and street department equipment. From the half-cent sales tax fund, it's three patrol vehicles for the police department, and the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund is a pumper apparatus replacement for the fire department. Revenues, total of $49.2 million, 15.4 million of that being charges for services, which primarily is from utility fees that come on your utility bill. Of that 15.4, over 13 million of that are utility fees. City sales and use taxes of 8.9 million, intergovernmental of 8.3 million, that would be, you know, funds from other government entities, state, federal, other local entities. Property taxes, 7.3 million, special assessments, 6.3 million, and smaller other items totaling 3 million total. Want to point out that property taxes of 7.3 million, you know, if we look at, you know, just fire department and police department themselves, the budget is 10.4 million expenditures for those two departments. So property tax doesn't even cover, you know, some of our public safety. We fund a lot of that through other revenue sources. Looking at the general fund, total expenditure is of 20.1 million. Funding for that comes from property taxes of 6.9, state aid and highway distribution, 3.9, city sales and use taxes of 3.9 million, utility fund transfers of 1.6 million, investment earnings of 1.2 million, licenses and permits and charges for service of 1.1 million, other operating revenues of 1.3 million, and then a $202,000 unreserved fund balance usage to balance that budget of 20.1 million. Looking at the overall property tax statements that residents receive, the City of Mandan accounts for 23% of that. The vast majority, the rest being Mandan School District, Morton County, and Mandan Park District. City property tax levy, there's a $204,000 increase or 2.3% from 2025. The general fund accounts for $274,000 increase, with other funds being $105,000 decrease. Library was a $14,000 increase, and the airport a $21,000 increase. So looking at a residential property valued at $300,000, plus 3.5% average valuation increase, and based on the city's projected mill rate, an $8 annual increase on a $300,000 home. So the utility bill and our utility rate analysis that we're working on, city staff and officials are currently reviewing the utility rates and charges for 2026 and future years. The impact to utility bill customers has not been determined at this point. An update will be provided before the end of 2025. Mayor, I'll turn it back to Greg to cover some next steps, and then we'll open it up to any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Justin. Mayor Commissioners, next steps in the budget process after this evening, after the approval of the introduction and first consideration of the city's preliminary 2026 budget, the city is required by state law that honor before August 11 that the city is to provide a notice of the public budget hearing date to the Morton County Auditor. And by August 31, the Morton County Treasurer will provide a written notice to each owner of each parcel of taxable property in the city. What is different about what the Morton County Treasurer is required to provide is, in previous years, it would be the notice of the public hearing on that, on that notification, and also the estimated property taxes for that property. The estimated property tax information on that notice is no longer required to be provided, according to legislation that was passed. So the only thing that the Morton County Audit, the Treasurer, rather, has to provide is just the notice of the public hearing date, time, and location, for which, for the City of Mandan, our public hearing will be at 6 o'clock at City Hall on September 16. And that will be the, the only order of business for the budget is just to conduct that public hearing. Prior years, after the public hearing, that same meeting, we would normally have the second and final consideration and adoption of the annual budget. I think going forward, starting this year, we're just going to hold the public hearing, and then the following meeting, we would then have the second and final consideration approving the, the annual budget. In this case, that would fall on October 7, would be, would be that date of final adoption. And then the city is required by law, honor before October 10, to submit a certified copy of levy as adopted, and a certified copy of the final budget to the Morton County Auditor. So those are the remaining dates to the city's budget calendar, and with that, I will answer any questions that the city commission may have.
Questions?
Mayor and Commissioners, Greg, is this the first time that the, in the preparation of a budget, that the department heads and the elected officials have gotten together for a period of eight meetings to hash this out?
Mayor Commissioner, in my 30-plus years with the city, I would say this has probably been the most intensive budget planning process that I can ever recall. We've had budget working sessions and discussions, but never as comprehensive and as detailed as we went through this year.
Thank you.
Mayor, to comment in that further, I've been working with the city in some administrative capacity to deal with budgets for 36 years, that's quite some time. And in dealing with city budgets over that period of time, in the early years, you know, the more, there was a greater focus on the year-to-year process, and, and a much lesser focus on looking at the long term, how things will be going future down the road. And this year, with the leadership of Mayor Freilich here, we've taken a different direction, actually, to come up and have a, a way to approach looking at the future in a more systematic way. And of course, the first thing we had to do was develop a blueprint, and Mayor Freilich here, come up with other department heads and other people to develop a blueprint on how to do this. And I think it's been a very successful one, and working with the engineering firms that do a lot of projects, that put input into what's going on in the city. There's a lot of movement going on in these areas that affect the budget, and, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, and right now, we're looking, you know, to three, five years, maybe longer down. It'd be nice to have a crystal ball, so it's an educated guess, but it's an educated guess based upon the expertise and the knowledge of good department heads, the engineering sort, all the people that put the input into this. And Commissioner Schoberg was talking about these intensive get-together sessions, and I can honestly say that by getting together in these sessions here, all the years I've been around, it gave me a greater insight, let's say predictability profile of where the city's going to be going, you know, further down the road. It's, it's a great instrument, and to keep this up, and I'm sure Mayor Freilich has this in mind, is one of his objectives in his administration, to do this. My term here is going to be more shortened as time goes on, but hopefully, you know, new ones coming in, we'll be able to adapt to this, but the blueprint is there, and I thank the mayor for leading us to that, and, and the other people, many other people that worked in this. This is quite labor-intensive, it wasn't me, anyway, and very informative. So I just wanted to make that comment, and I think we're on the right track here in terms of being very across-the-board with our citizens to have a, a system that addresses the future growth while trying to maintain a fiscal responsibility, teaching everyone, citizens out there. I mean, it's difficult, and over the years, these projects get bigger and bigger. You know, you look at a street project, having to do wastewater plant, you're talking about millions of dollars. And, you know, the, you're not, not even putting, and to find alternate sources, just to make sure through this planning that we have revenues and sources to pay for these things. Amen?
I'll jump on, I'll jump on his coattails. In my short tenure, I, I haven't seen a more intensive working with all the entities involved to come up with a plan and move down the future. Right now, we've set it out for five, and I know we're going to be looking farther out than that, because basically, it'll make it, I don't want to say easier, but, but it will, over the long term. So I was very proud to be part of this next step.
Okay. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the introduction at first consideration, and call for a public budget hearing of ordinance number 1473, making the annual appropriations for expenditures or expenses of the City of Mandan, North Dakota, for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, and making the annual tax, tax levy for the year 2025.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, and at this time, I would like to thank city administrator Newbauer, Greg Welch, Justin, and all the department heads, and everybody's alluded to this intensive, intense meeting. We started January 6.
Early.
Somewhere in there. So we've been at this a while, and there was, there were a lot of things that we had to compile, and you guys did a wonderful job. You used my name, Dennis, but this is a reflection of all the department heads and Mr. Newbauer, and years of experience. So yes, I think it meets the needs of the citizens of Mandan, and yes, it is fiscally responsible going forward. And so again, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number four. Second consideration of ordinance 1470, a zone change from CB Commercial to RMH Residential Mobile Home Park District for lots 3 through 6, Block 2, Meadowlands subdivision. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'll sound like a broken record here for these next items, but we have had no further comments based on the first consideration of ordinance 1470.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the second consideration of ordinance 1470.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to item number three, consider the introduction, and nope, we're going to flip the page on that. Number five, consider, second consideration of ordinance 1471, a zone change from RM Residential to PUD, Planned Unit Development, for Clover Grove. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, again, we have received no further comments since the first introduction, so we would look for the passage of the second consideration of ordinance 1471.
Move to approve the second consideration of ordinance 1471.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, item number six. Second consideration of ordinance 1472, a zone change from CB Commercial to R7 Residential for Lot 2, Block 1, Schaff Estates, Third Edition. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, should I change it up a little bit?
Yep.
We have had really no further comments from the first consideration of ordinance 1472.
Okay, with that, with no further comments, would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the second consideration of ordinance 1472.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. And with that, there is no other business before the commission. Future meeting dates for the Board of City Commission, August 19, 2025 at 5:30 PM, September 2, 2025 at 5 o'clock PM, and September 16, 2025 at 5:30 PM. And with that, be kind to your neighbor, and it's onward and upward, Mandan. Meeting adjourned.